Okay, we are live and we're also gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, just to remind you.
Right, no, of course. Good evening, everybody. Would you all stand and or don't stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna make a tape next time and blackmail all of you. If you know what I mean. Members, have you read the Planning Board minutes from November? Does anybody have any questions, comments they wanna make about it?
No.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes and also, excuse me, when you make a motion or a second or make a vote, please say your name so that Vera can write it down. Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from November?
I'll make that motion, Phil.
Thank you, in a second, please.
I'll second that, Simon Carey.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sabrina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis, how do you vote? Dennis?
He's on mute.
Aye! Affirmative!
Aye, sir.
Hugo?
Aye.
And that's, and I say aye too, so it passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask that the board just identify themselves and indicate if there's anyone with me, with them rather, this evening during this event?
You're absolutely right. I'm sorry. Simon?
Sorry, I'm a planning board member. I'm here on my own.
Sabrina?
Sabrina Cruz, planning board member. I'm here with my dog by myself.
And Dennis?
Dennis Lowe's, I'm at home by myself.
Hugo?
Hugo German, planning board member. Yep, I'm by myself.
Stephen?
Stephen Wilhamp, planning board member, here by myself.
And Phil Tomac, Chairman of the Planning Board. I'm here with four animals. It may get wild. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Let us start with the Brigham property. Is there anyone here representing the Brigham property?
There's not gonna be. Neither one of them are gonna be there. They said because everything was held over till January, so just keep the hearing open.
All right, is there anything we need to discuss, Liz or Bruce or John?
This is... No, the Paul Lynch, the engineer, appeared before the board, if you recall, last week at the workshop, and has revised the plans to the event that he'd be reducing them in January. So the board, if they wish, they can open the hearing and adjourn it until next month.
All right. So we'll go to...
Actually, excuse me, this is, excuse me, Phil, this is a continuation of the public hearing, so you can adjourn it till next month, as I said.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll make that motion. Hugo German.
And a second, please.
I'll second that.
I have to open it, too.
That's Dennis.
Yeah, Dennis.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Phil, did you open the meeting?
The meeting? Oh, the public meeting. All right, let's start all over again.
There you go.
Can I get a motion to open the public hearing, please?
Oh.
I'll make that motion. Hugo German.
And a second, please.
Dennis Lowe's.
And Dennis, how do you vote?
Affirmative!
And Simon?
Aye.
And Hugo?
Aye.
And Sabrina?
Aye.
And Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. And now can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing until next month?
I'll make that motion, Phil, Stephen Wilhamp.
And a second.
I'll second that, Simon Carey.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Hugo?
Aye.
And Sabrina? And Dennis?
Aye!
And Stephen? Stephen? I vote aye, it passes.
Do you wanna state the date when the hearing would be continued?
It's January 13th, so...
It will be continued to January 13th, 2022, I believe it is.
Yes.
Shall we move on to Holly property? We have a representative from Holly property right here. Please tell us how we can help you.
Is Kent self-storage on, next?
I thought I, I didn't do that? No. Sorry. Sorry, Bob. We'll be with you in a second.
So Rena, so Rena's not gonna be on either.
However, we do have memorandums and we do have a draft resolution for consideration that I prepared and sent out to everybody. And so I don't know if the Planning Board has any questions about the draft resolution, and I'll give you a walkthrough. Any questions?
Okay, the resolutions for the Holly property, right?
No.
Or not, the Kent self-storage.
V Brock, yeah. Kent self-storage.
The 290 days, right?
Yep. So you want me to give you a walkthrough?
Please.
Okay.
Right, nobody has any questions, comments? Yes, please, Liz.
Okay. So it's a draft for today's date, and it is a draft resolution for extension of reapprovals with conditions for site plan and steep slope and erosion control permit for V Brock Kent self-storage. The first couple pages reiterate the project's history, including things that have been submitted when the Planning Board started reviewing. Let's see, that it also involves the steep slopes and erosion control permit approval, and that the Planning Board did their proper circulations and initiated SECR, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And then they concluded their SECR review on November 14, 2019, with a determination that it would not have any significant impacts. They held public hearings beginning October 2019. And then on November, let's see, hang on a second here. November 14, 2019, they granted final approval with conditions. And then the conditional site plan approval of November 14, 2019 expired 12 months from the date of approval. And let's see, they, the Planning Board received a request to do a reapproval. And on December 10, 2020, the Planning Board adopted a resolution reaffirming its SECR determination and doing a reapproval, a final approval with conditions to the site plan, steep slope and erosion control approvals. And then recently, that was to expire, and a letter was submitted requesting 290-day extensions of the prior reapproval. And then I'm beginning with the resolves. Now therefore be it resolved, the town of Kent Planning Board as lead agency under SECR, and given there has been no change in the proposed action, hereby reaffirms its prior determination that proposed action described will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts, and an environmental impact statement will not be required. Then there's a resolved that goes over the prior reasoning supporting the SECR negative declaration. The next resolve, as per waiver request from the applicant in accordance with zoning provisions, the public hearing for this project is hereby waived because it's already been held and closed. Resolve that pursuant to Code Chapter 66, Planning Board hereby grants extensions of the steep slope and erosion control permit reapproval. Resolve the Planning Board hereby grants 290-day extensions of the prior reapproval, a final approval with conditions to the proposed site plan and steep slope erosion control plan approvals as depicted on the following maps, and then it lists the November 2021 submittal. All the plan sheets. Be it further resolved, the Planning Board grants the 290-day extensions of the prior reapproval, the final approval, with conditions to the proposed site plan and steep slope and erosion control plan approvals, subject to the following procedural conditions. And I'm gonna read these because these are new, thanks to John Andrews. One, prior to the expiration date for the first 90-day extension, the applicant and/or their representatives shall return to the Planning Board at a regularly scheduled meeting and by means of written documentation demonstrate and substantiate good faith progress in satisfying any remaining conditions of approval. And two, the Planning Board in its discretion retains the right to rescind the second 90-day extension in the event the applicant has made unsuitable progress or fails to demonstrate, in the opinion of the Planning Board, a good faith effort to advance this project. And then last two pages, the last resolved, be it further resolved, the site plan and steep slope and erosion control plan approvals, including the 290-day extensions of the prior reapproval, are expressly conditioned on the completion of the compliance with the following, and these are conditions 1 through 13. And the last two, reiterate that if they're getting ready to expire, that they could expire, and if they get near expiration, what to do. And also that it's the responsibility of the applicant to submit proof that the conditions have addressed. So that's a long walkthrough, but it's been a while, so. Any questions?
Members, questions, comments? Can I get a motion to accept this resolution?
Motion to adopt, sorry.
Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Phil.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye!
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye too.
Okay.
Liz, that was quite a comprehensive resolution, nice job.
Well, thank you. You guys have seen through it before, so thank you. All right.
Shall we move on to Holly property? Mr. Bradley, please.
He's on mute, Bob.
Do you have questions for us?
Hello, my dear.
There you go.
Okay, the, we had questions from Bruce about the wetlands, and I went out with Stephen Moreno, and we hiked through the property, picking probably the coldest day of the year. And he flagged one area that he found as a wetland. He did soil tests all along the way. And we found a, one area over by the stream that was considered a wetland, and it's now flagged. And I don't know whether it will affect the location of the septic at all, but we will find out, and I will get a report to you. Steve is doing a report now, and we should have it in the next couple days, and I will give it to everyone. I also made up, there were some questions and some things that had come up at the workshop meeting, and I made up these lovely little handouts for the board members. One of them is, in the handout, I gave a copy of the judgment, which was always a question as to the court judgment. So I will drop, I will give this to Vera and put in everybody's mailbox.
Pass it out to us tonight.
What?
Pass it around tonight.
It's right, right here, it's lovely. So it's a copy of the judgment. And in the judgment, it alludes to a bedroom count by the Planning Board that was in that era of 1979. The judgment gives us, or gives the Hollies. I have no financial interest in this whatsoever, even though I do have my license with Doug, so I'm not a party to this at all. But the number of proposed units that they gave us is 27 new dwellings plus the existing six, for 33 total. We're only doing 12 new, 12 new units, and we're doing, there are actually seven that exist, which would be a total of 19. The Planning Board that was referred to in the decision, the number of bedrooms at that time was 55, and that's what the, that's what the decision refers to. It was broken down into, into 22 two-bedroom units and to 11 one-bedroom units. This project will be, will be down from that. It'll be 36 bedrooms in total, 17 two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units. So those are the changes that came from the decision. Also, somebody asked what these things will look like, and I, we got the plan in absolute technicolor that I will give to everyone here. And they're two-story units, two bedrooms each, two bathrooms each. And I also included a plan for it. It's not a construction plan, but it's the floor plan of the building, so that will be, that will be included in this package along with the, with the report from the, from Steve Moreno, the wetland consultant. I also received this evening all of the information from Liz Axelson, and that will be taken care of with, with Putnam Engineering and will be added to the, to the plan that we have. So that's what we've got, and I will drop these in everybody's mailbox or have, I'll give them to Vera, copies for Vera. And that would answer some of the questions that were brought up as to what these look like and what exactly the decision states. And it was from 1979, it was Judge Hickman in the, in the State Supreme Court. So this was signed the 30th day of January, 1985. So I just wanted to let everyone be aware of that, and I'm sorry we couldn't see everyone in person, and I just had these lovely things made up. And I was extremely proud of myself, so.
We'll, we'll make sure you get credit for them when we see you next.
Job, Bob, great job.
Looked good from here, Bob.
All right, so. Happy holiday, everybody, and I will see you in January.
Can I ask one question to the board?
Sure, of course.
I got, I got one, too.
Okay, you go first, Dennis.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Bob, what we need is we need an updated survey map showing the water course, showing the delineation of the wetlands, all the flag numbers, and the 100-foot buffer, so that we have a current record of the effect that the wetlands influence has on the development, especially the location of the septic disposal system and the overflow area or the alternate
reserve.
secondary area. And get that to us as soon as you can.
Yeah, I understand that. Where we flagged the wetlands, where the wetlands was flagged. I don't know if it's gonna affect what the original plan was, but we will know within the next couple days. I just gotta get out there and measure it.
Liz, could I just chime in here?
Get your surveyor on site and have him locate all the flags and plot them on the map and get it to us.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
All right, hey, Bob, it's, I just wanted to cut in real quick, if I may, just with respect to the wetlands. Good evening, Bob. Thank you for getting that done. One of the things that the town code points out is that the wetlands are determined in the field, such as what was done with Steve Moreno, but also based upon soils as well. And looking at the map that Paul prepared for you, there are what are known as ridgeberry soils, which are identified in the town code as wetland or hydroxic soils. With your permission and with the boards, I'd like to speak with Steve Moreno because the wetland soils, as well as the field boundary, the field flagging, constitute the delineation as per the town code. And if the ridgeberry soils are more inclusive into the site, meaning they are further away from the stream bank, et cetera, it may not be necessary to field flag the surveyor's work out there. If the survey, if the wetland field flags encroach further into the site when compared to the ridgeberry soils, then it will be necessary to pick up the field flags. So with your permission, Bob, and the boards, I'd like to speak with Steve Moreno, get his thoughts on that, and see, and let you know where we go from there.
Yeah, he was, while we were out there, we spoke about you, and he has good things to say about you.
Back at him.
He had some great stories, but he had some good things to say about you.
We've been through a lot together.
He did, he did quite a few core samples with the auger, and he did quite a few core samples in the soil. And we went right through it, and he would be, you know, he, I mean, there would be no problem speaking to him or having him speak to you. And we would give you a copy of his report just as soon as I get it. And I asked him to forward one to you, but it depends on where, you know, where they go at first. But you know how to get in touch with them, obviously. I mean, they're...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He would expect you to call.
The reason I'm asking this, Bob, is that it may be that if the ridgeberry soils are more inclusive into the site, the surveyor would not need to go out there. He wouldn't incur that expense and delay to get that done. I'll find out, and we'll get back in touch with you, okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You bet. And Bob, did you get my memo as well?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. And I gave them a copy, and I gave Paul a copy, and yeah, we all have copies of that now. And I gave him a copy of that before we went out.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I, I don't wanna seem like this, the slacker here, but from an engineering perspective, what Mr. Bradley has, has submitted to date is, meets the general requirements for what I would consider a concept plan. And I did review it. Any comments I might have at this point in time would be kind of picky. And rather than do that, I think it's more important to address the issues identified by Bruce and Liz, which will enhance what I get. So you will not be getting a memo from me. I can work with what I got so far.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so Bruce, you kinda poked into what I was gonna talk about, which is basically, no, no, it's good. Is, is that I, I believe we have offline consultation authorization from the Planning Board so that if in the middle of you guys trying to address our comments, we can talk back and forth if that's all right with the Planning Board. Just to expedite things.
Yeah, that would be great, and that would be a great help.
So I don't know if the board wants to...
No, it's fine, Liz.
Okay. And I know Steve Moreno, too. He was from Tim Miller Associates.
Yes, yes.
I used to be with them, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyway, that's, that's where we are as of now, and again, we'll take into consideration what you sent, Liz, and, and then, you know, as soon as I get the report from the wetlands inspector, as soon as our fingers thaw out. We'll get right to writing this.
Members, any questions?
No.
And thank you, Bob.
Have a Merry Christmas, everybody, and enjoy the holidays.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Take care.
Is there anyone here for the Maniatus property?
Sure is.
Hi, Jamie.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Jamie!
How's everybody doing?
Where's the little one?
Yeah, Jamie.
I sent him away for ice cream.
Didn't bring us any?
No, I'm sorry. I mean, if we had an in-person meeting, I might have had it, but you guys canceled in person.
I brought cookies.
All right, tell us why you're here, Jamie.
So I think we've addressed the majority of everyone's comments. We had resubmitted for, with John and Bruce's comment letters. And so I think tonight, we're, we're really just here for the bond estimate to be referred to the town board, if you guys are okay with the amount that John has, which we...
If I may, just jump in. There, there is a memo from me dated November 29, 2021. We also got an updated report from Jamie's, Jamie's office today concerning the Health Department. I haven't had a chance to go through the details, but, because I was out in the field. But for the most part, she stands correct. They've addressed most of our concerns. The, the, the two matters that lie before the board is one, to accept the recommended bond amount of $13,432 and refer that bond amount to the town board. And then number two, so long as you are all convinced that the public hearing concerns have been addressed, I think both Bruce and I are ourselves, we would ask for authorization to move this to administrative review to file, finalize the details and get this ready for chairman's signature.
And for the, for the board, I reviewed what Jamie had submitted most recently, and my comments to date have been satisfied. I have no additional comments for the board.
Members, any questions? Can I get a motion to accept the $13,432 bond? Am I phrasing this correctly?
Yes, sir.
And send it to administrative track. I'll make that motion, Phil. This is Stephen Wilhamp.
And a second?
A second. Accept the bond and refer it to the town board, correct?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye!
Hugo?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. And can I get a motion to...
Who seconded it?
I did.
You did.
You did sign it, okay.
No, Hugo.
Hugo, okay, thanks.
Can I get a motion to send this to administrative track?
I could vote together, Phil.
You said you could. Does that count?
Yes, it's all in one.
It does.
Then, then we're good here.
We're done. Merry Christmas, young lady.
All right, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Hey, thanks for everything, Jamie.
We'll see you next year.
Okey-dokey.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Shall we move on to Ananziatus Molly Corners?
Sure.
Is there anyone here representing Ananziatus Molly Corners? Liz, what do we have to do about this?
Hello?
Oh, Jack, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, we can't see you, Jack.
Uh, start video.
That was good.
I don't know why the video won't start.
Uh, we're having...
Oh, here, I got it, I got it. There you go.
There you go.
It was showing off. Get video to work.
Took a while.
Evening.
Good evening. Who goes first?
Why don't you just give the board a summary of the project, Jack, please?
Smalley Corners Road, single-family house construction on Smalley Corners Road. Subdivision approved and created this lot in 1987. We had Health Department approval. We just got the renewal of the Health Department approval. We met with John, and I think you, Bruce, maybe, at the site to go over the driveway. John had some suggestions on the driveway near Smalley Corners Road. We submitted the revised plans. Now, the one of the items was, that was brought up by you, Bruce, is the width and the frontage don't meet today's standards. And discussing it with Bill, he said we need to go to the ZBA. I don't, I don't know why we have to go to the ZBA on an approved subdivision that is not like Lake Carmel vintage.
Well, I think Bill is here, so.
The reason that I told, the reason I spoke to you, Jack, is that the subdivision, although it was created back in 1989, the lot was never developed in more than three years, so it's null and void. It has to go back. Everything else was built in that subdivision except for that.
Everything else was built in that subdivision except for that.
Well, we, I had spoken to, uh, someone who was gonna do some research on it, but I appreciate your, I mean, I will have to go, if we have to go to ZBA, we will, and but, um, anyway, that's, that's where we're at now. I think we should be pretty close, right?
Uh, there is a memo from me, Jack. I'm, I'm hoping that you did get it. Um, uh, it's, it was dated November twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one.
I did not. Where are we at?
You are correct. You got the driveway kind of revised. Um, I think you omitted a sheet when you made your submittal because some of the stuff.
My original, I did.
Some, uh, no, this second submittal as well, because there are still some things missing. Um, none of them are substantial, but I think there's a couple opportunities for you to perhaps remove those retaining walls. I took a quick look at the grading and with the change on that driveway and the way that goes with that covert, you might be able to uh, eliminate some of the retaining walls, make your life a little bit easier. Um, and, and you might need to be able to, to, to reshape some of the, the drainage along the road, uh, along the ways that, uh, you and Richard Othmer and myself discussed it. So there's some opportunities there. And then one of the matters that got raised at the, uh, workshop is there seems to be a discrepancy in the ownership. One owner was identified as a, as a pizzeria and then it was subsequently changed to something else. So if you could kindly, um, clarify that, um, ownership issue for us, then I'll send you a copy of my, uh, my memo tomorrow morning, if that's not inconvenient.
No, that's, that's fine. I, I thought I submitted a revised deed, um, but I mean, a new deed, a new deed, but.
You did, and that's where the problem lies because the original application still is in the name of the previous owner. So we're, we're, we're trying to figure out who's on first.
Right.
Okay, we, I'll, I'll straighten that out.
Okay.
Are we okay on the easement? Uh, like I said, just sent you some verbiage. I told you that I tried to get in touch with the surveyor. Um, and the, the filed map I sent, I gave you guys the filed maps. And neither filed map has any, um, this doesn't show any easements and there really doesn't seem to be a need for any easements. There's a drain.
It, it appeared on your surveyor's map and, and, and I, I concur with your analysis. It doesn't appear to show up on those other maps. So I'm at a loss to explain where he grabbed it from, sir.
I, me too, because I talked to, I tried to get in touch with him. He supposedly retired. I talked to a local surveyor down in Southern Westchester. He put me on to the guy who worked for him. The guy who worked for him, he doesn't know where that came from. So anyway, uh, where are we at with this? I mean, could we, we schedule a public hearing? What are we doing?
Well, Jack, we still have some odds and ends left over from a bit on my memo too. Did you receive mine, Jack? It's dated today, December ninth?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay, I'm gonna get that to you tomorrow morning as well. Um, there's some, one of the things, Jack, is that, that, that deed that, uh, John Andrews referenced, uh, that's dated, uh, September eighth, twenty twenty-one. And what you have is that the applicant is transferring property to a new owner. But we don't have an application reflective or a letter of authorization reflective that, that can continue. So just straighten that out for us if you could. Um, one of the things that you've been requesting and, uh, all along, and I've kind of indicating that I, I would not recommend the same to the board, but just to clarify, you're asking for a, a tree waiver and because of the nature of the property, it's really steep, there's a lot of rocks, there's some drainage course at the front, however intermittent it might be. Uh, I can't in this instance recommend to the board that that grant, that waiver be granted. Certainly up to the board if you wish to do so. That's entirely, entirely up to you. Um, and then there's just some odds and ends left from prior memos, Jack, that if, when you get mine, if you could just clean it up and, um, have a look at it and see, and obviously if you have any questions, let me know. One thing too is that you and I had talked about locating on a map Bailey Brook and also there are some sunlit soils, which are hydrox soils. And you said in your, uh, response memo that they were put on the map, but I'll, I'll tell you what, I just couldn't find it and that's probably on me. Um, but I just couldn't locate where those are on, on any map you presented.
Yeah, it's there someplace, uh, I, I, it's there someplace. And Bailey Brook is so far up the road, it's really added to the picture. It's four or five hundred feet. They cross it four or five hundred feet up, but it's on there someplace. Uh, as far as tree waiver goes, I mean, there's only one place for us to put the house in the septic and and it doesn't make sense to spend thousands of dollars to locate some trees. We're gonna cut trees, but we're gonna, we're only, we're disturbing less than an acre of land. And what's the property? Eight acres, nine acres? So, you know, come on.
Well.
It's up to the board, I know, but.
Yeah, but, but honestly, Jack, you know, in a situation where if there's a flat site, if the drainage really is not an issue, um, you know, the, the trees that, that are gonna stay in place, um, we, we would like to see the trees to see if you can reduce the number that are proposed to be cut um, and maintain kind of the integrity of the site out there. It's just real, as you know, it's real rocky and, and steep and, um, you know, the amount of vegetation we can retain on that site as much as possible is, is beneficial. So that's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Well, I don't agree with that, but.
I, I know that and you didn't agree with it six months ago and I suggested it might be something you want to do when the boundary surveyor was out there at the same time. But, um, nonetheless, you know, the site hasn't changed nor has my opinion.
We get a, we get a opinion of the board, so, um, if I have to, if the board wants me to do it, I'll do it, but it doesn't seem reasonable with this eight or nine acres there and and we're, we're ta- taking out one acre of, of trees. I mean, but yeah, we're gonna do it anyway, whether we do it where we have it right now or if we move the.
Again, Jack, again, you know, what ends up happening is that all the trees within the limits of disturbance usually are planned to be cut. And what the planning board likes or attempts to do is try to maintain some trees within the limit of disturbance as well as minimize that limit disturbance, perhaps it could be reduced to save some large trees or some important trees on the site as well. So this is, you know, whether the size of the site is not really material, it's how many trees are supposed to be cut, how valuable those trees are and whether or not that design and footprint and, and what have you of the design could be changed to reduce the amount of tree cutting. This is a, a sensitive area. It's just upstream from, um, you know, so the lakes down there, the lakes are, um, affected by pollutant loading and the board is trying to maintain the balance of good development and natural resource preservation. It's that simple. So a- again, the board could maybe drive by if you wanted to look at it and hold in reserve decision, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Phil, this is Stephen Woolham. Uh, my opinion is, um, let them do the tree waivers recommended by Bruce. No, I'm sorry, don't do the tree waiver as recommended by Bruce.
Don't do it?
Yeah, don't, don't get, don't give the tree waiver.
Oh, okay. Are there four members who don't agree with Stephen? I'm sorry, Jack. I don't think, well, we'll do it right now.
And Jack?
Yeah.
Uh, the, the business with that easement that's been bantered around. Um, the filed map copy, um, doesn't show any easement. Um, and there's nothing on the filed map that indicates any easement. I'm wondering if it's been cashed about for the discharge of any water uh, under the driveway through that proposed covert onto the next door neighbor's property.
The, the covert, there's a, there's a covert on, under the driveway on the adjacent property. And we're putting a covert under our driveway or.
Yeah.
Driveway. There is a, there is a very steep and divi- defined stream channel or drainage ditch channel. Actually, it's not a, it's, it's not a water courses in accordance with DEP standards, because DEP was out there. But any case, it's very well defined and
Yeah.
I don't see a reason why there has to be an easement, but, because.
Yeah, the water's always been flowing that way.
Yeah, a- again, you know, I, I think, Jack, you just have to make a good faith effort. You've already done most of that. I mean, you are correct. I, I, I keep looking. I, I agree with Dennis. There is no, there's no reason for that note to have appeared on a survey drawing, but I have it on a survey drawing with somebody's signature and seal. I, I, I need to be able to have some reasonable ba- reasonable basis for ignoring it.
All right, well, I have to talk to the attorney and they can restick and check the title. There, there must be a title report. Title report should reflect an easement if there's an easement. Other than that, uh, I don't know. That's all I can tell. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so, um.
Neither am I, sir.
If, if you can get, if you can get ahold of the surveyor that, that has shown an easement of some kind uh, on a survey, uh, see if you can find out where he got that information, whether it's in a deed or it's on somebody else's map. Um, if, if there's nothing in existence about the legality of an easement, no deed or anything, um, John, John, I think has the answer is that there's not any reason to make an annotation to it, because that'll only make somebody go look for it.
Okay, well, I, I'll, I'll try to do some more research for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Couple of phone calls probably. But if it's, you know, if it can be some kind of a, a point of contention somewhere along the line, uh, let's get rid of it if we don't need it.
All right, I'll, I'll get, I'll look at those, uh, your comment memos and we'll talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Right, I'm on the next one too, so.
Jack, you have any other questions for us? Do you have any other questions for us?
Do I have any other questions?
Yeah.
No.
Members, do you have any questions for Jack?
No.
Then let's move on. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Um, I'm on the next one and Madeline is the owner of the, or the potential owner of the next one, so you might want to put her on.
Okay. Hi, Madeline. Why don't you tell us about your erosion control plan?
Who? Oh, my. It's a single family house on a subdivision that was created in two thousand and one. It's a two lot subdivision. One lot that we're building on is thirty-nine acres plus or minus. There's a, a right away from this property to Horse Pound Road on which there's an existing, um, uh, an existing field road driveway going to the house site. Um, the easement is from, is across New York City property. And one of the questions that somebody has about the, um, a common driveway that on the subdivision map, it shows a house site on lot number one, which comes off of this driveway. But that property is owned by New York City DEP and it was purchased as part of their protection of their watershed. That property is never going to be developed, lot number one. We've done the septic work, uh, with the health department and it's been submitted to DEP and the health department. We've had minor comments. We're probably pretty close to getting an approval. We had, the subdivision map shows a house in a septic area on the west side of this property. And the, there's a, there is a stream that's about four or five hundred feet from the area of disturbance to the east on this property. I walked, actually I walked it today, uh, so that this, this stream is not, no place near the, uh, area development. I know the, uh, there's a, a state DEC, uh, wetlands check zone, if you check the DEC website, but there's no, it's, there's no place near there. Bruce, if you walk it, you, you'll find out for yourself. I'm asking for a tree plan waiver. Um, the house site is in a field and it, there's no trees in the house site. The driveway is already in all the way to the house. A field driveway, you know, like a field road and it, it's been trafficked with trucks and I drove in there with my SUV. It's, it's easily traversed. Uh, the only place we're gonna be cutting any trees is maybe ten trees in the septic area. Again, this thirty-nine acres where the area disturbance is about eight tenths of an acre. Um, I'm looking for a public hearing waiver. I mean, this thing went through a subdivision in two thousand and one, had a public hearing, no doubt. Um, nothing has changed on this property or in the area of this property. Um, there is one, um, issue with a part of the, the farm road is out of the easement, like fifty feet out of eight hundred and fifty feet is out of the easement. Uh, if I put it back into easement, it means cutting some trees and uh, regrading up near the top. It's right, all the way up near where we're building the house, uh, and it's, it's a DEP easement and the owner is, is dealing with DEP on, on an easement issue, so we're gonna try to get DEP to just increase the, the easement to a rock wall so that we don't have to move the farm road. They, they plan on using the driveway as is. Um, with maybe some minor modifications, because it is, it is easily passable. That's my story.
Jack, there is a memo from me dated December one of twenty twenty-one. I don't know whether you received that or not.
I have that.
Okay, but I also got from you a package, I think, yesterday.
Yeah, I, I didn't.
And I think I, I, if I look quickly, a, a large percentage of my open issues were probably addressable if that package had been part of the initial submittal, so I haven't had a chance to review it. I will review it. Um, the, the issues that we had from, from the, uh, workshop, uh, you kind of touched on, um, is that easement? Um, if you can get that cleared away, um, and if DEC is, if DEP, excuse me, um, doesn't need to share that driveway and they're willing to give us some documentation to that effect, I think that puts that issue to rest. But, um, you know, uh, Bruce and I, interestingly enough, we're at the site today and there's a lock. There's a locked gate off of Horse Pound Road.
Yeah, seven oh six oh is the, I, if you told me. Uh, there's a locked gate. Uh, it's a kind of one of those combination locks. I was there, what time? About eleven thirty, twelve o'clock.
Yeah, we were there at about two o'clock.
Yeah, we missed it. We missed it.
You want to go in there? The, there's, it's one of those little things where you turn, turn the little tumblers. It's seven zero six zero.
Don't do that over public.
I wouldn't do it over public.
You might want to change it now, Jack, and just give us a call, okay?
Text it to Bruce.
Sorry.
Just text, text, text me something new. That's okay. It's okay. Um, Jack, I, I got a memo out, um, a few days back. It stated you got that too. Great. So yes, you know, John and I are gonna go out and have a look. Um, I did note that on the plan, it appeared to be a water course remote to where you're constructing the house. You're right that DEC has a check zone and that typically you need to contact them to see what, if anything, they'd like to do. Um, generally in Putnam County, if you can demonstrate the house is outside of the hundred foot setback as shown on the maps, they generally do not require a biologist to come out, but it's their call to make. Um, one of the things that, uh, I'll go out and look at the trees as well. This is obviously a, a different site than the one we discussed previously. Um, and I'll, I'll take a look at trees and, and make my recommendation to the board regarding your request for the waiver. Um, the other thing, getting back to the access, is there a frontage on a town road, uh, owned by the property owner? There's a piece that comes down onto Nichols, I think, Jack, and the other piece comes down on Horse Pound. What's the scoop with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, let me see, I got the file map. Yeah, I mean, it's a, hmm, no.
I can answer this one, Jack.
Okay, good.
Yeah, this is Madeline, um, the first person from the property. Uh, hello, um, so the, uh, part that adjoins Nichols Road is on the far side of the thirty-nine acres from the house site. Um, and it's across a lot of undeveloped land, um, some just kind of soggy land, a lot of rocky land. So it's just not a reasonable place to enter the property. Um, that's the reason for the easement from, um, Horse Pound Road that was created, uh, when it was subdivided and the other piece was sold. So I hope that clarifies.
Thank you, yes.
There's a fifty foot. There's a fifty-foot. Strip that goes to fifty-one point four-three feet on Nichols Street, but yeah, it's like. Half a mile away from the, the property and there's a wetland down in that corner there, which is probably why when they did the original subdivision. They, they have this right of way that goes out to Horse Pound Road and that's where the, the driveway comes in. And that's a D E P access easement.
I see, so, so there is. If I'm hearing you correctly, Jack, uh, and Madeline, fifty-foot of frontage that is owned on, on Nichols, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Bill Walters again, because this is a subdivision without an improvement on it. It doesn't have adequate frontage on a town road. What is, needs to be done with this bill, do they also have to go to Z B A for variance?
This one looks like a flag lot.
Kinda sorta, yeah.
Got two kinda, yeah, it's, it's a, it's, well, if you look at the. Uh, I don't know if I can put that up on the, but it's on the, it's on the existing condition plan that I submitted. Well, the overall site plan that I submitted. I know Bruce, you, you, you and, uh, John must have it, I don't know if the board has.
I think I got that, Jack.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jack, I think I sent you a letter. Sent somebody a letter about flag lots this week, so.
He sent it to me, I don't think, Bill.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean.
I would, I would check the, the zoning code to ensure. That it meets the requirements of a flag lot. Uh. It's the only thing I could tell you, I don't have a, I don't have a copy of the survey, I don't know what the measurements are. You know, that'll, I don't have any of it.
Again, again, it's on an approved subdivision map that the town approved and created these lots. How can you go now and, and say, well?
The other thing I can tell you, Jack, if you don't like my decision, you can, you can easily go to the zoning board and ask for an interpretation.
No, I guess we have to then.
Right, because, you know, without the frontage, if they, they have frontage on Nichols, so they do have some frontage on, on a town road. And you're right, Jack, you know, historically, maybe this would be, you know, grandfathered in, but apparently no longer, or that's not been the case. So something needs to be cleared up, other than that, if they had no frontage. You know, they would have maybe a two eighty-eight requirement, because there's an easement accessing the property from a town road. But that doesn't seem to be the case here, so, um. Do you think you could also get us a copy of that easement, including any maintenance agreement that there might be? Is that, is that floating around by any chance?
That one?
Yeah, so the easement is, um, currently being discussed with the, uh, D E P. It's a little bit of a, of a weird situation, um, it was. When the original subdivision was created, um, the easement was put into the contract. Somehow did not make it into the deed, floated around unnoticed for twenty-one years until we went to purchase the property. Um, and has been gruesomely delayed by COVID and, uh, documents being. Physical while people are not in the office, so that is currently being dealt with. Um, and of course, we'll have the documentation, um, to present as soon as we finish dealing with it.
Okay, dude. Alright, so I think maybe our next step, Jack, is, is John and I need to head on out there again. And, um, just have our field visit and report back to the, uh. Planning board and then you also maybe start tracking down some of this information regarding the zone.
Yeah, and I apologize for not attending the work session, I had a planning board meeting in Patterson that night that I, it was a hearing and I had to go to, but, uh, I'll be at the next one.
Okay.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, I'll look at those memos.
Jack, what.
Happy holidays.
You too.
What we, what we should have. Is we have, we should have updated mapping. That, uh, shows the, uh, actual location. Of that existing driveway from Horse Pound Road back into the property.
You have that.
And, and, um.
We do have that, that's.
We, where, you know, I don't have it. All I've got is the plan that shows a straight line driveway going from up where the house is out to Horse Pound. Is this something that's on the subdivision map?
No, the existing driveway is shown on that map, it's labeled as existing drive.
Yes, it is, it is a profile.
Well, I'm missing something here, cause the plan I got. It says, it says there's a right of way. Um. Who owns the property under that right of way? Um. I don't have anything that tells me where the existing driveway is. If in fact it is out of the easement, I got. Nothing to, to, to document the easement. Uh, let alone the adjoining owners.
It's on.
Stuff I'd like to see it.
It's on sheet S one and S two. Which you should have. Uh, I, I submitted the number.
I'm looking at sheet S one. What's the date that I should be looking at?
It's the date, uh, this October twenty-sixth, twenty-one.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Yep.
And it doesn't show an existing, it shows. Okay, yeah, alright, it says existing gravel drive. But it shows it inside of all that right of way that's on there.
Yes, that's the right of way.
Until you get up, until you get up about fifty foot from the house site. And the right of way makes a, a, a slight bend. Uh, so I believe the south, and the driveway continues straight. Onto the property, it runs outside the easement at that point.
But come on, uh, can I just ask one question? Is it a right of way or access easement, because they're two different things.
Right, that's right.
It's not clear.
I, I don't see anything where it has. Oh, okay, alright, yeah. There's a, a, uh, little deflection in the meats and bounds of the, of the access easement. Right of way or whatever, yeah. And the, and the driveway, yeah, the driveway crosses some adjoining property, it's just not very clear.
Well, this is good, here, look.
I've looked at this, man, I've looked at this looking for an easement documentation.
Subdivision mapping, it shows, it says right of way. So on this, yeah, it's a right of way.
Simon, it says right of way and then there's a small notation to the other side, that it's, um. For the benefit of, I think it's parcel two, to be used for ingress and egress only, and that's the only thing that it says.
Okay.
It's, it's very unclear.
Yeah, what are the subdivision lot numbers here?
Uh, you have to go to the subdivision plat, the, the subject parcel is parcel two and the other parcel, which is the owner of that right of way. Uh, is parcel one.
Yes. That's D E P.
Alright.
Okay.
You good, David?
So Jack, if you.
I have one thing for you, dealing with the, dealing with the Z B A, if you're looking for an interpretation for that flag lot on, on. This particular parcel that you're working on. Looking for interpretation of the. One out there on Smollet's Corner. Uh, the deadline for the Z B A is the twenty-seventh of December.
Yes, I thank you, you told, you sent me that in an email, I'll make that, if I have to, I'll make it.
Yeah, just send me that stuff back and I'll, I'll get you the applications and everything sent to you, cause. I won't be here, but we'll get it to you.
Okay, and Jack, just, could you please just change the combo on that lock and email or text either. Either, either John or I, and that way we can, uh, have a look as soon as possible while the weather is still with us, okay?
You wanna go out there tomorrow and then we can change it after then?
Can't tomorrow.
I'm afraid it's gonna be crowded, Jack, so you better hurry.
Alright, I'll talk to Madeline.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, take care.
You too.
Merry Christmas, Jack.
You too, guys.
Jack, you have anything else for us? Any questions?
Me? No.
Members, you have any questions for Jack? Or the consultants? Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, thanks, Jack.
Have a good holiday.
Next one too.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
See you next year.
Are we up to Friesland? Is anyone here for Friesland?
Um, I am here, Ann Manning, and so is Jack, he's on this one too.
Wow. Trifecta.
Oh boy.
Give us a brief overview, please.
Jack, you want, Jack, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, you can go. You know a bit more about it than me.
We, um, what is this, this is a, um.
Erosion control plan.
Erosion control plan, um, and we are, um. In the process of this, we've got a number of pages of great notes to process and put on the drawings for the. Approval, um, where at this point we would, um, like to request a bond estimate. And I don't really know the process for that. How that works, Jack, do you?
Yeah, maybe you just wanna explain what you're doing, we're doing an addition.
Oh, sorry.
An existing house and it was approved previously. Um, but they never, they changed owners, right?
Yes.
And we had approval from the health department that the, we weren't, we weren't increasing the bedroom count. But that expired, so we're in the process of renewing that, the same project that you, that you saw. Years ago, how many years ago, uh, Ann?
Twenty fifteen, six years ago.
Six years ago, so, and it's in the Gypsy Trail Club. Gypsy Trail has their own little planning board for these things. Uh, but in any case, we're here again to get this reapproved.
Nothing, just a, just a clarification for the record and for the board, it never reached full approval. Uh, it kinda got suspended with conditions outstanding. Um, as we discussed at the, uh, at the workshop session, um, we've kinda picked it up, uh, some of the conditions and, and. You know, relooked at it, so there's some things for Jack to do and the architect, uh, Bruce and I went out there. Um. It's an interesting little site, um, and, um. It's a rather ambitious project and, and we will probably have some additional. Uh, and not really comments, but just clarifications, cause it's kinda hard to figure out. When you're actually standing out there and jump in, Bruce, what's exactly going on, is it? It looks like the pool is new. But the notation seemed to indicate you're just refurbishing, there's a, there's a couple goofy things that we just need some clarifications on and we'll, we'll expand our memos. But, um, uh, other than that, it's, it's, it's. Pretty straightforward and I, I think it's an easy thing to pick up from where they left off and. Bring it through to completion, we're gonna need updated board of health, then we're gonna need to, uh, to finish the process. When it comes to an estimate, ma'am, typically what happens is Jack would put together his first and best, uh. Uh, idea of what that is, submit it for our review, if we agree, we agree. If we don't, we'll amend it and make a, a formal recommendation to the board, but the first, uh, the first go-through is on you folks.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I, I thought I, I read where, in one of your memos that you were putting this forward to administrative review.
Now, this gonna, this has gotta go to a public hearing or we're gonna get a, we have to get a letter from the Gypsy Trail Club.
Right, recall that, at the workshop, Jack, that was discussed with the board. And they're gonna schedule a, a public hearing for January's meeting on the thirteenth. But also, if you please contact, you're correct, Gypsy Trail is its own process. And if they come back to the board and they've gone through the process and are approving it, the board feels that will be sufficient, but. They wanna also schedule the public hearing just in the case that the Gypsy Trail Club does not respond, uh, you know, uh, by that time, okay?
Okay, then we'll get.
And, and you're correct, Jack, my letter does suggest it can be moved to administrative review. But as always, it depends on the board's pleasure with regard to the public hearing. And in, since they made a decision to hold that public hearing, uh, administrative. Review would be deferred until after that point in time.
Okay, that's fine.
And, and, and Jack, I don't know, I have a memo also dated today, went out a couple of days ago on this, did you happen to get that, or Ann, did you get that?
Yeah, I got it, Jack, did you read through it yet?
Oh, I did not.
Okay, you know, it basically has the same, um, kind of open items that were from, uh, several years back on two thousand and fifteen. Um, one of which is that the property, um, um. It's adjacent to Pine Pond, I believe that rear retaining wall is the property line and. I just wanna, there, there's nothing shown on the plans regarding where that pond is and where the hundred foot setback from that pond is. I don't believe you're gonna be encroaching that with your limited disturbance, but that should be put on the plans. Along with the soils to determine where the wetland boundaries are, et cetera. Uh, the other thing John and I were talking about is that the retaining walls are being moved around, it seems, and. Um, there does not seem to be complete grading shown on the plans, there's a, a note that the retaining wall will be about. I. I'm sorry. Everybody okay? Um, so, you know, so have a look at the memo that I put together, uh, Ann and Jack, if you have any questions, uh, you know, just please do let me know, okay?
Okay, yeah, you, you should know that, well, you've been out to the site, so you know that that house is way up on the hill above the lake, like.
I, I do, and as I just said, Jack, I doubt seriously the limited disturbance is gonna encroach on the buffer, but. But it should be shown on the plan and, um, the buffer should be shown just to demonstrate that effectively.
Oh, we'll show it up clearly, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Also, um, about, you had mentioned something about the tree plan and a, a request of a, possible request of a waiver. Because most of the new addition is being built where we're pulling down. Parts of the old house. And there's only two trees that are affected, um, with. With the new construction, which are clearly shown on the plan that we have now, otherwise, everything stays undisturbed.
Right, right, I understand, Ann and, and, um. I, in my notes, I indicate that if you choose, you could request a waiver from the planning board. If you could just provide that in writing to the board that you're requesting a waiver, or Jack, if you could do so. Then, um, you know, I can have a look at that and again, make a recommendation to the board, and the board will choose accordingly, okay?
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Uh, before we leave, the board needs to make a fi- a, a, a formal motion. To conduct the public hearing on this matter for their January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Okay. Ann, or Jack, do you have any other questions for us?
I don't.
I do not.
Members, do you have any questions for them or the consultants?
No.
I'd like to, if I may, I just wonder if the board should include that if, um. Information is obtained from the Gypsy Trail Club Association approving such project. That the public hearing would be waived, that way you have both of those going on at the same time.
Yeah, if we can get it, we'll submit it.
Right, we, we don't. Go ahead, go ahead, Jack.
Wanna add to that resolution, if that, if the Gypsy Trail Club letter comes in, that you, that'll put this to administrative review immediately?
So, no, I'm not gonna. Maybe not immediately, but.
Nice try, Jack.
It was a good try.
That's a, that's a good try, yeah, he, he wants to submit his application and say administrative track.
Well.
Your project is approved, go away.
Bite your tongue, please.
Uh, so, if the motion maybe could be that the planning board. Will conduct a public hearing, duly notice public hearing on January thirteenth, however. If approval is obtained for the project from the Gypsy Club Homeowners Association. Said public hearing will be waived, something like that.
Is, it, would it be likewise appropriate if there was something from the Gypsy Trail Club that said that they will be doing their own review? And in lieu, you know, even if their process isn't done yet, that it. It is part of the process that needs to be done, and if it isn't done by then, that. You may deem that we don't need a public review, but it's in writing that they will do their own review?
They're gonna, I think, I think Ann, to answer your question, they're gonna need to present something to the planning board documenting the fact that they met and that. They voted and they find that they approved the project pursuant to their requirements. Um, what we're trying to avoid is having this thing go on and on, waiting for. Something from those nice people at Gypsy Trail, um, so I believe the board's decision at the last meeting. Was to kind of schedule both in parallel and that if Gypsy Trail can get the material in by January thirteenth, great. If they can't, the board will open a public hearing, that's possible. Under your consideration, the board could adjourn the public hearing for more information, but I think that's what the board decided they wanted to do on Thursday.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Wow.
Questions, members? Anybody?
No.
Did I get a motion? To schedule the public hearing for January thirteenth? Except in the case the Gypsy Trail. Sends us a waiver saying that they. Found it okay, am I phrasing this properly?
Uh, that they found it okay, that they, um, that they have reviewed the application and documents and they have voted and they approved the. Um, the, um. The addition of this house.
Anybody else wanna add anything to that?
In which case the planning board would waive the public here.
Alright, there we go. Can I get a motion to accept that? What, Stephen?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that, Simon.
And Stephen, how do you vote?
Good night.
Simon?
Hi.
Dennis?
Yeah.
Hugo?
Hi.
Sabrina?
Hi.
And I vote I too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you, Anne.
Thanks.
Take care.
I think we're up to Frill and Pure.
Yeah.
Anyone here for Frill and Pure?
It's a Jason. Yeah, there you go.
Can you give us a brief rundown of why you're here?
Uh, Jason Snyder with Beatty and Watson, uh, representing Sam Pure and Allison Frill in the matter of their uh, application for their steep slope and erosion and sediment control permit.
Steve, come here.
We, we have a, uh, proposed, uh, single family residence on a forty-seven acre parcel on Gypsy Trail Road. Uh, we have approximately, uh, a seven hundred foot, uh, gravel driveway proposed. Um, we have an approved, uh, septic and well, uh, permit from the health department. Uh, we have about an acre and a half of, uh, disturbance. Uh, where a, uh, full stormwater pollution prevention plan uh, with enhanced phosphorus removal is required. Um, we're still in the, we just have a rough layout for the, uh, stormwater plan regarding that. We have some infiltrators proposed. We obviously have some, uh, does, does everybody see my screen?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so we obviously have some, uh, wetlands and, uh, water courses and, and, uh, one hundred foot buffer shown. Uh, we've done our best to eliminate all, uh, disturbances within the, uh, uh, wetland buffers. We do need, uh, uh, both, um, Bruce and John were concerned about the proximity of the, uh, foundation to the, uh, wetland buffers, so we are going to tweak the, uh, we're going to rotate the house a little bit, um, uh, to just provide a little bit more buffer, uh, from, from the buffer. Uh, so that we so construction access is a little bit enhanced regarding that. Uh, other than that, uh, that's about it. Um, any questions?
Thank you, consultants. Do you want to add something here?
Well, uh, there is a memo, as Jason indicated, there are, uh, uh, items that have to be identified. Thank you for taking a look at that, uh, uh, that buffer matter. Um, but, uh, Bruce and I were both out there today. We were out there together. Um, and one of the, there's a peculiarity, uh, Jason, um, in the vicinity of the driveway, the existing driveway, there's a utility pole that, that kind of, if you're not careful, you'd almost run into it coming out of the driveway. It's not shown on your map. And the notation on your map is you're going to slide your driveway, uh, to the north and square it up a little bit. That utility pole is going to be kind of almost like right on one of the edges. So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping you can get that located. Um, I haven't developed my pictures yet, but I have a picture of it taken from the seat of my truck, so you, you can see it's kind of like right there. Um, and in, in evaluating it, there's a bit of a line of sight issue to the right. There's a little hiccup just off your site. Um, and, and you kind of lose a vehicle, so you might want to take a, a, a careful look at line of sight there. Because when we were out there, cars kind of zip down to that area and they come upon you quite suddenly, so.
Okay.
Something you might want to take a look at, but the, the, the more critical thing is, um, apparently they're replacing the, the poles on that road. So not only is it, it one pole, it's a double wood situation. They've got two poles side by side. So it's an interesting little, and it's not shown on your plan.
Okay, I mean, I thought we.
Service on that road. That's, I think it's a Hinkles McCloy job with Nisek.
Hmm, hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I think we want to. I mean, I think we do want to square that drive, that driveway up a little bit.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with what you're proposing. You just need to take a look at the line of sight and, and that pole location. And, and I'm wondering if, you know, Bruce and I were looking at it. You're moving it to the north, I believe. It almost looks like it wants to move to the south a little bit, Bruce, right? To increase that line of sight and square it up a, a little bit more sou- southerly. But please take a look at it. We're, you know, it's, it's just an awkward situation right there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Jason, you, you might not meet the site distance requirements to the north. Um, it's just kind of a hill there where the word trail shows up on the map. And so if you could swing it to the other direction, you would probably, you know, there's, there's some rock there. If you move it to the north, if you move it to the south, there's less stuff in the way. And you'd improve the site distance to the north. So just have a look at it and see what you think, okay?
Okay.
See how that works. And as far as, um, you know, I, I did prepare a memo to Jason. Did you get, uh, the one I stated again today, December nine? Great. Okay, if you have any questions, let me know. You know, we, we discussed the wetlands buffer and you know, John and I are looking at it, um, you know, are, are feeling that it might be prudent to apply for the wetlands permit, parallel track with this, to ensure that, you know, if you're going into the wetland buffer to do the construction, that you have got adequate permits in place because it is again, very, very tight, not only around the house, but up around the septic system area as well. Um, so, you know, see what you think, but, you know, it's something we feel because it's so tight and there are so many wetlands. Um, it may, it may be imprudent not to get one, but we'll leave that up to you. Other than that, um, bulk zoning table, uh, we talked about this at the workshop, couple odds and ends. Um, certainly give me a call if you have any questions on the memo.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I have been adding some things and bits and pieces, uh, regarding to, to some of those things, so.
Great.
Um, the, the one thing that I didn't want to forget was the, um, uh, the waiver for a, uh, uh, an updated, uh, boundary survey.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, based on the fact that we are, we are far, we are fairly far away from the, 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 the property lines. And this was a, an approved, uh, subdivision plat. Uh, this was created in, uh, this, this lot was created in, uh, eighty-one. And there is a boundary survey associated with that, um.
Well.
Subdivision as well as, uh, you know, a, a, a boundary survey on a, on a forty-seven acre parcel is going to be, uh, several tens of thousands of dollars, so, um, if, if we could avoid that, that would be, uh, that would be a, a big, a big savings.
Jason, maybe I could suggest, you know, it sounds reasonable to do that based upon what John and I were talking about. But if you could maybe slap on the bulk zoning table, just to make sure that as you suggested, we're all compliant with all the zoning requirements. Um, then, then that can be revisited and have a look at that.
Okay, yeah, I, I did, I did, I did get it, I did get it on there and, um, it, it'll be submitted with the next, um. So, so should we request that with the next, uh, in writing with the next?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay.
And I, 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 I concur with Bruce. I, I don't, I don't see the need on this, this big of parcel. It's, it's, it's pretty clear what's out there. Um, so, um, i- it's something I could, I could support, so. We just need it officially in writing so we can make a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, okay. Um, and, and I, I, I heard a lot, a lot tonight about a, uh, a, a tree survey. Um, I, I'm not aware of a requirement for a tree survey on a, and I don't know if the other projects were similar to this, where a tree survey was required, but is that, is that in chapter sixty-six?
So part of the tree survey and vegetation, uh, retainment is to do with erosion control chapter. Basically, as you heard me discussing on the first project, each lot is different, you know, Jason, and if the trees are performing a before, an important function relative to retaining water on the site, reducing runoff, et cetera, et cetera, then it does become part of chapter sixty-six. However, other sites where the trees are not performing that function per se, and the tree survey is typically waived by the board as a requirement, so, um, we'll have a look at that too. But you should, uh, obviously put that in writing too, if you require that from the board to look at, look at the tree survey. Okay?
And, and, and to be quite honest with you, uh, Jason, um, you made the representation and Bruce and I saw the remnants. This site was previously logged. And they actually did a halfway credible job, uh, logging and cleaning up. Not the best, but not bad. And for the most part, uh, but for a couple trees in the vicinity of the house site, most of the area that you've proposed for development has been logged and is cleared. So I don't think you can, I don't think you can, uh, touch a lot of trees, uh, so. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I, again, it's one of those things where we need a written request. And, um, in this case, as Bruce recited, um, the facts are materially different than some of the other sites.
Okay.
Members, do you have any questions? Consultants, you have anything else to add here?
No.
Mrs. Snyder, you have anything else?
No, I will, um, uh, I will have an annotated response for, for all of these comments, um, prepared for the next meeting with a revised plan. And, uh, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you very much. Have a great holiday.
Thanks, Jason. Happy holidays, buddy.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have one question for Vera. Does she have a copy of this plan in, uh, in her office?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, because, uh, one of the concerned neighbors was in the office today and he was looking for the erosion control plan for this particular project, so, uh, I don't know whether he's going to show up tonight on the meeting or he's watching on TV, but, uh, tell him if he didn't get it, he can at least spoil that request to you, so.
Yeah, I'll be glad to do that.
Okay. Just a heads up.
Thanks.
All right, moving on. Did we get everything above the line?
Yes.
Who wants to go below the line?
Hmm.
Who's side? JPE.
I can, I can try to do an update on, uh, JPE, so. Um, see, I did. What, where JPE is at is that the board did an approval with conditions. And so some materials had been submitted to address conditions of approval. Um, I know that I need to tell Jo Rina to resubmit the architectural floor layout sheet, that back in the set. And then most of the comments, um, that remain to be addressed are Bruce's and John's. And so what I suggested when I spoke with Bruce today and John, now I'm telling you this, that let's put our heads together and find out what remains, because ultimately I'll need to do a sign off letter to the planning board. But it's mostly comments from the two of you. So that's where we're at on that.
Right, so if I can just interject real quick, John, please, uh, fill in. John and I went out to the site today. Um, they have completed the wetland mitigation project at the back corner beyond the storage tank visible from the road. Um, they did the work that was outlined in the letter that was put together in the subsequent site plan notations. Um, so what John and I have, uh, determined is just to ask, as was in the memo, for the engineer, Jo Rina, to sign off as the engineer, that the work has been completed in accordance with the approved plan. But there, as far as we can tell, and as far as we're concerned, are done with the, uh, wetland mitigation piece and the drainage piece in the back of the property.
Uh, and Liz, to your point, I issued a memorandum dated December second of twenty twenty-one, uh, regarding the completion of this project. It was sent by email, um, and you were copied on it. And, and basically, uh, the items in our August twenty-fifth memorandum have been satisfactorily resolved with the exception of an owner's consent note that needed to be signed. Um, the recommendations in our November fourth, um, regarding the wetland mitigation had been incorporated into the plan. And as Bruce said, we went out there and checked, it's been done. Uh, the only thing that we're waiting on, um, i- is the certification of Jo Rina. And, uh, since it never was addressed in terms of timing, we thought it needed to be issued before any certificate of occupancy, but since the work is done, the quickest, the quicker Joe can get it in, the, the better off it would be. And, and so I believe I've satisfied your request, so, um, I think we're done from that perspective. And if you don't have that memorandum, I'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Thank you, John.
You're muted.
Sorry, I, I do, I do have the December two memo from John Andrews. And what I wasn't sure of is prior to that, uh, John and Bruce had done sort of a joint memorandum. And I didn't know if something more was coming from Bruce, so, so basically, one, we just need the owner's consent signed, and you're saying that two has been addressed?
Well, all we're, all we're really waiting for is a, a letter from Jo Rina indicating he is signing off on the work too, Liz. We just went out there today, so, you know, I will write my memo for this tomorrow, get it out to the board and yourself. And, uh, I think that's the only things that are pending on this, they're, they're, they're there.
So, so no try, the number three, that's addressed?
I don't know what you, would you say number three, Liz?
Okay, it says, no timeframe is associated with completion of the work. We recommend the work be completed. Engineers' construction certification be received at the town account prior to issuance of C O.
So part of it's completed in that the work's been, been accomplished on the site. We're just waiting for the letter from Jo Rina.
Right, the resolution had no timeframe in it, so it just said it had to be done. So, i- in, as far as I'm concerned, I just gave you an arbitrary. But the work is actually done, as Bruce says, so it.
Good.
Joe signs off, then it's fully complete and there's no, no issue.
So can you supply for a building permit so, so they can start their process and when Mr. Rina submits his certification, they can get a C O?
Well, they gotta get a. Oh, do they have to get?
He's got it. At least Jo Rina has to resubmit a, a completed set of plans burying the necessary signatures on the owner consent note. And then the chairman can sign off. Now, there's a process that you have to go through to review the building permit, so they could submit all their paperwork. You just can't issue a building permit. It cannot start work until the chairman signs the plans. So they can be processed simultaneously. I don't know how long your process is going to take, though.
Couple of days.
Yeah, so.
Can I just go back?
It's my understanding that they're changing a whole lot inside the building, writing a couple of lifts, doing a little alteration to a couple of walls, but shouldn't take long to look at.
Okay.
Can I just go back? Because I think I'm going to need to do a sign off memo and I want to do that as quickly as possible, so I want to be clear on this. So, John, your memo dated December two, twenty twenty-one, number four uh, refers to the memo that was a joint effort. We recommend the planning board confirm Mr. Barber has no further issues, and I think Bruce is going to do his thing.
Right.
And then once Bruce does that, the next thing we need is a certification from Jo Rina, architectural plans uh, from Jo Rina, and then that's it. And then I could do a sign off.
As long as they sign the owner's consent note, certainly.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, that's good.
The guys from JPE, no, understand?
I'm sorry, Steve?
I was just making sure the guys from JPE that are on, making sure that they understand. Uh, you're muted or can't hear yet?
They're not.
I can't.
We can't hear you.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, if you understand.
We still can't.
Oh, he just muted himself.
Yep.
Unmute.
Yeah, for some reason his mic's not working.
Uh.
Okay.
That's okay. As long as he understands, he can start the building process, submit an application for the building permit and get Jo Rina to submit revised drawings. With the sign off, yep.
And I'll communicate with Jo Rina's office, uh, tomorrow, hopefully. They're in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you.
Don't put the lifts in yet, hang on.
Yep.
Happy holidays.
Get started.
Who's working?
Friedman, Crossman.
Uh, we're basically done. I think Vera indicated we're waiting for the bonds to come back from the town board, at which point I believe the chairman can sign the plans, correct, Vera?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fregosi, Marinelli, and Miller Hill, Bill, I think that's yours, Bill Walters.
Yep, uh, they've gone to the Department of Health and met with Gene Reed.
They are in the process of changing the. Septic plan to indicate where the new septic fields are. Doesn't sound like it's a, shouldn't be very long before we get a sign-off from the Department of Health. Their windows and doors were delivered. I lifted the stop work order so that they could install. The windows and doors to make the building weather tight. I instructed Mr. Marino today, spoke to him on the phone, that he had to come back to the planning board. To show the differences and to get the planning board approval for the, the change in the. The house positioning and the septic tank location and fields.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. See, Clearpool Maintenance Building. Think, I think we're pretty much done with that as well, John. Correct? I'm wrong. We heard from Jamie, got some final information from her. Have Health Department, we're in good shape.
Yeah, she needs to submit some final documentation for us. I issued an email, but they're essentially on the road to getting chairman's signature. Every, the bonds are in place. We need a final set of revised plans. She's indicated she'd working on that. We'll get that shortly.
Great. Renary over on Hillside Road. That's the property that had been staked out in the field. We talked about perhaps the board. Have a look at that. It's your convenience without forming and convening a quorum going out to look at it, which is free, three or less. Yeah, Steve.
I, I was, I actually made a statement about this, just because I can't respond to all two communications. There's some issues with the SharePoint distribution list. There's been a ruling, I believe it was in the town of Somers quite a few years back regarding. Quorums for site visits. The planning board can actually go out as a, as an entire entity and go out there as long as they stay on topic with that and it is an agenda item. There, there is no issue with open the meetings law with Ted going out to that site.
Interesting. Do you think you could find that for me? Because everywhere else I've been, I'd love to see that.
Yeah, I, I'll send it out.
Me too.
Yep.
Okay.
I think it has to do with that they can't discuss their opinions of things.
Yeah, it literally, it, it just says, as long as on, on topic and all you're discussing is that site visit, you're good to go.
Oh, we wouldn't do anything but that.
Yeah. Well, you can talk about pretty flowers in the sky, but you know, as long as it's not about another topic item, that you're good to go.
All right, thank you, Steve. That's, that's good information. We'll, we'll check it out. With Renary, by the way, just, you know, that is again, something that there was this mistaking that went out to look at the driveway. You're encouraged to have a look at it, okay, when you can.
And did you guys look at the sketch? I sent, I sent it to you guys, but I can't print it out right now.
Yeah, Bruce, we are actually going out to see that.
What's that?
We are going out.
You are going to see it. Okay, okay, great. Excellent. Vidiello, John Andrews, are we done with that?
We're done. That's ready for chairman's signature. I don't know whether they've got it signed yet or not, Vera. I think we were going to do that tonight and we can't do it long distance.
Yeah, I think that's done.
So we can do it next week, Phil.
Who's this? Are you in tomorrow, Vera?
Vidiello.
No, I'm, no, I'm not, but I'll be back in on Monday.
All right.
Alrighty, Route fifty-two Development, Liz.
Well, actually, I was going to tell you nothing's happening, but at ten fourteen AM, I got an email from Patrick Cleary, the planning consultant to Kent Country Square. Slash Route fifty-two Development. And it looks like he's sending me. A packet by link to look at and see if it covers what is needed to the planning board. Because prior to this, Pat had sent various emails over the last year and a half or so. With attachments that just cover all of the things that we had last requested that they provide in order to proceed. And we requested that by memo in March twenty twenty. So I will have a look at this next week. And have a consultation with him and maybe Bruce and John. And then figure out whether it's acceptable for them to make an official submittal and get the process started again.
This is headed for that environmental impact statement, right?
Yeah, I mean, just to refresh the board. It was one of the most interesting scoping sessions I've ever been to. At the tail end of a scoping session. That was closed, the applicant's attorney got up and said that they were going to, after all, consider a zoning amendment. And so I asked the board to reopen the scoping session. This is all on transcript. They reopened it. And what ensued after that is that we completely. It was Bruce and Julie and I then revamped the scoping outline and revamped the seeker positive declaration and brought it back to the board. And they redid the positive declaration and redid the scoping outline and opened it back up to the public. And ended up adopting that scoping outline as if they had a zoning amendment. So the two major points we're hoping for clarity on are, one, make it absolutely crystal clear that the truck stop is not. Part of the development. And two, be absolutely crystal clear about whether or not there's a zoning amendment regarding building height or not. So I'll have to look at that packet. Put my head together with John and Bruce and see if we can say to them, go ahead, make a submittal that's official to the planning board. I'll keep you posted.
Something's happening.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe.
All right. On Kent Mining. Thank Liz.
Sure.
All right, and Kent Mining Law. So we met a couple of weeks back with the town board. John predominantly, but Liz and I had some helps, put together a draft ordinance. The board reviewed the ordinance. There were several really good questions from the board as well as from the public. One of the options the board also asked us to do is to put together a no mining. Law where mining would not be allowed in the town of Kent, of which we will be doing so. And a lot of the comments that the board put together in the joint meeting that we had with the town board. Were infused within the ordinance itself. Most importantly, the phasing concept of mining and then building and improvement, rather than mining everything at once and hoping an improvement will be built. There were a, a lot of natural resource components. We also talked about. The IOC zoning area and how, you know, that's basically a large, large mountain with weapons pretty much on three sides of it. And should it be another area of the town considered for mining or commercial development? The board was, uh, town board was intent upon looking at a balance of potential mining along with, uh, commercial development for commercial ratables. But was very, very aware of what had happened in the past with mining on Route fifty-two. So that's where we are. So John and Liz, anything to add to that?
Just to, I, I don't think I advise you, Bruce. Um, the councilman had reached out to me and asked for a copy. Of the law in Word format, because he's been having a series of meetings with various interest groups. And they're going to take their first crack at making some modifications to the law and making some inserts. So they felt it would be easier to work from a Word document than, than what we had submitted, which was a PDF. So I'm expecting something from them in the near future. I think he was holding a meeting this week.
I think, I think he was meeting with the CAC, John, the Conservation Department.
So. So it, it is moving and we, we told them that we would not make any effort to do anything until we got all their comments.
All the feedback.
That's correct.
Yeah, let's do it once and do it right.
Thank you, sir. The budget doesn't allow for multiple options.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to chime.
Right, but always time to do it over. Anybody have any further questions or comments?
I just wanted to say something about the mining law, Phil.
No, you can't.
Oh, okay.
No, go ahead.
So, um, one of my main concerns is I know that we're in, there's a big issue that a community has and they're very worried about it. It's very easy to start writing. A section of say zoning, like some supplemental requirements that basically. Starts to become a whole huge code on its own. So my main thing will be to make sure that. It relies on the rest of Kent's code, because there's a lot of good stuff in the code. And when there are redundancies, that can create interpretation problems and conflicts. So that's my main goal. This is really a Bruce and John thing. And I'm just in there to make sure the code stays nice and succinct and clean and. Coordinated. So that we can use it. That's it.
Thank you, Liz. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I have, I have one more. Who seconded?
Did yours.
I know, but this is, this will help Vera. Who, who seconded on the Kent self-storage approval?
John Carlo.
Ah, okay, thank you.
No, no, I'm.
Oh, John Carlo's not on tonight.
Oh, that's right.
Hugo did.
I thought Hugo did.
It was Hugo?
Hugo, yeah.
Hugo was slamming down those seconds. I think it was Hugo.
It was?
Yeah.
Members, before we close the meeting, we're going to go into executive session. So stick around, all members. Is there anything anybody wants to discuss? I'm sorry?
Hey, Paul? Paul?
Yes.
Um, you could, just, just don't record it, but I still need to see the people, okay?
Okay, no problem.
And are you done with consultants?
Phil, you don't need us?
No.
Okay, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
John and Liz, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Winter solstice and all that good stuff.
And to you guys.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
He, he heard of me.
Paul, same to you both.
Happy.
Can I get a motion to close the meeting and to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
Bruce, get lost.
Bruce is still, he's frozen in time.
All right, we have to discuss organizational things. We have to.
Uh, it's still saying we've been recorded right now.
Yeah.
Well, it ha, I think it still has to be recorded.
Yeah, but it says we're live.
Oh. Uh, no, you got to close the meeting. You have to have the motion and adjourn the meeting and then I'll, I'll stop that. And then you guys can go in your executive session. Did you?
We did have the motion.
All right, stand by then.